It's ten o'clock and it's time for the council to be in session. Will the council members please come to the council chamber?
It's ten o'clock and it's time for the council to be in session. Will the council members please come to the council chamber?
It's ten o'clock and it's time for the council to be in session. Will the council members please come to the council chamber?
It's ten o'clock and it's time for the council to be in session. Will the council members please come to the council chamber?
It's ten o'clock and it's time for the council to be in session. Will the council members please come to the council chamber?
It's ten o'clock and it's time for the council to be in session. Will the council members please come to the council chamber?
It's ten o'clock and it's time for the council to be in session. Will the council members please come to the council chamber?
It's ten o'clock and it's time for the council to be in session. Will the council members please come to the council chamber?
It's ten o'clock and it's time for the council to be in session. Will the council members please come to the council chamber?
It's ten o'clock and it's time for the council to be in session. Will the council members please come to the council chamber?
It's ten o'clock and it's time for the council to be in session. Will the council members please come to the council chamber?
It's ten o'clock and it's time for the council to be in session. Will the council members please come to the council chamber?
It's ten o'clock and it's time for the council to be in session. Will the council members please come to the council chamber?
It's ten o'clock and it's time for the council to be in session. Will the council members please come to the council chamber?
It is ten minutes after ten and we have eight members present. We need two for a quorum. We have Ms. Goldberg, Mr. Hernandez, Ms. Sikowski, Mr. Pacheco, Mr. Padilla, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Savornich. Eight members present, we need two for a quorum. Mrs. Chick, Mr. Fuhr, Ms. Calander, please come to the council chamber. Mr. Holden, Mrs. Walters, Mr. Wax, please come to the council chamber.
It's ten o'clock and it's time for the council to be in session. Will the council members please come to the council chamber?
It's ten o'clock and it's time for the council to be in session. Will the council members please come to the council chamber?
It's ten minutes after ten and we have eight members present. We need two for a quorum. Mr. President.
Okay, the council will please come to order. This is a meeting of the city council for the city of Los Angeles on the third day of May of the year 2000. There are fifteen council districts in the city. The regular meeting days are Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. We are currently being viewed by cable subscribers throughout the Los Angeles area on Channel Thirty-Five, and we're also being monitored by council phone. The first order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Savornich moves. Mr. Padilla second. There's no objections, unanimous vote. Next item.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
If there's no objections, unanimous vote. Next item.
Mr. President, you have a confirmation of city official on the agenda. Item number seven, it's confirming Judy Ivy Burton to the commission on children, youth, and their families.
Uh... Mrs. Goldberg?
Yes, I've had the extreme pleasure of, in another context, of working with this individual and can without reservation declare that she will be an enormous asset to the tasks that face children, youth, and their families, and I would move that we accept this nomination.
Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Mr. President, members of the council, I rise simply to confirm and at once affirm the comments that were just made about this long-term stellar educator who knows about the business of educating children and making for public policy that will ultimately contribute to their best interests and to the interest of their families and all of us who make children our priority. And I should say that the fact that the commission for children, youth, and their families will have among them the likes of Judy Burton, it will no doubt mean that we are headed in the right direction, and we're glad to stand and say those remarks in her behalf. I thank you.
Mr. Hernandez?
Mr. President, members of the council, I just wanted to also add to the acclamations and urge a unanimous vote of Ms. Burton for the commission on children, youth, and their families. I think she'll be an added asset, especially with her background. I chose to waive her coming to our committee after an interview with her, and there's no question in my mind that she would serve a tremendous purpose on the commission at this time.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Goldberg. Prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you very much to serve the city, and we want to send this forthwith. So, thank you. Next item.
Mr. President, we've been advised, item number twelve, Council District Six has requested that be continued for two weeks to May seventeenth.
Is there any objections to continuing twelve for two weeks? Seeing none, that will be the order. Next item.
On the regular agenda, item number one is an item noticed for public hearing.
Anybody in the audience wants to be heard on item number one? We have no cards?
There's people just freezing their hands, but they, I guess, apparently haven't turned any cards.
Well, did you fill out the cards? Okay, well, let's just...
Why don't we hold it on the desk until they prepare their comments?
Okay, we'll call it special. Next item.
Items two through six are items for which public hearings have been held. Items two, three, and four have ordinances, and you are expecting twelve.
Yeah, we'll hold those two, three, and four on the desk. We do have a card, we have some cards on five, but we've had public hearings on this already, so what is your pleasure? Five is called special? Okay, we have item six. Any discussion on item six? If not, prepare the roll on item six. Item six is called special, too? Okay, uh, next item.
Items for which public hearings have not been held, items eight through thirty-nine.
Okay, we have somebody, we have somebody who wants to be heard on twenty-nine, so we'll call that special. Anybody want to be heard on any of those items other than twenty-nine?
Twenty-nine is called special.
Okay, all right, the public hearing's closed on all those except twenty-nine?
And twenty-six special was called?
Twenty-six is called special. Thirty-three is called special. Any other specials? Any other specials?
Which one?
This is the one you said.
Thirty-eight is called special. So we have the ordinance...
Mr. Brown, I'm calling special. Item thirty, thirty-one, thirty-five, and thirty-six are all, should be held together.
Yeah, we'll call those special.
And Mr. Fur...
Thirty, thirty-one, thirty-five, and thirty-six.
Item number twenty-eight has an amending motion. It's a technical amendment. The CAO is recommending that the account numbers be changed, and the amount is changed from two-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand to two-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand.
Yeah, there are no objections to that amendment, so we'll... Okay, we have thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen through twenty-three. We have twenty-four, we need a motion. Mr. Savornich moves, and twenty-five, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, thirty-two, thirty-four, thirty-seven, and thirty-nine. Prepare the roll on those. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Forthwith on item twenty. Next item.
Mr. President, you have twelve members now. Do you wish to go back to the ordinances, items two through four?
Yes. Okay, items two, three, and four, ordinances, any discussion? If not, prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Items forty and forty-one are closed sessions. You wish to hold those on the desk?
Leave them on the desk, yes.
Item forty-two on the continued agenda, there are two reports on the file.
We'll call it special. Next item.
Item, item number one is called special. Do you wish to go back to that one, or do... Item number five also has cards on it.
Do we, do we have the cards for item number one? Mr. Savornich, you suggested ten-minute public hearing?
What I would like to ask is that if, for both the appellants as well as the applicants, if they each would like to fill out their cards, get them to the sergeants, and I would move a five-minute public hearing on each side with your permission, Mr. President. I see that I'm getting a prop here, for the sake of the cameras. So, I'd like to move a five-minute public hearing on each side. And if they do not have their cards complete as of yet, then I suggest that we continue to hold it on the desk until the cards come forward to you.
Five-minute public hearing now on each side. Those against Francisco Loza would be the first one, and then we have Raquel... Don't all move at once. The time is running. Raquel Orlanda, Rose DeLuca. Are you going to speak, or are you going to... I'll quote, "Start talking. Tell us why you're opposed to this."
My name is Francisco.
John.
I live thirteen thirty-seven South Gaffey, and my family and I, we live in the apartment next to door to the tire shop for more than ten years. I feel my family was safety, was good neighborhood, when the tire shop there again to notice difference. There was noises to six stories to morning, and the last one till ten, ten o'clock in the night. They still going to there a lot more traffic and not, and noise to a lot of traffic. And the size the shop open, there is not more dirt and dust. And I like to hear, he knows to, I have kids, and I want to keep safety, and he is very mad with me. I know Mr. Flores with mad and me again, but have to tell the truth. I don't like to their shop next door to me. Why he's not moved, why he's not moved to his shop next to his house? I like to his move and his house. Thank you.
Okay, Rick?
Rachel.
Rachel?
Yeah, I live at thirteen thirty-seven South Gaffey. I'm one of the tenants. I am right behind the tire shop. I have a lot of dust in my restroom, in the bathroom of mine. The lights are on all the time. I don't have to turn on the light to use the restroom in my bathroom. Have a lot of noise, you know, the graffiti in the area, it wasn't as bad. It's just, it's not a good place for a tire shop. I have a daughter, and that's what worries me, is my daughter, you know, with the dust and all the problems that cause. He has somebody living there who's drinking alcohol on the premises that I've noticed, that I've seen, and for a place who installs tires, they shouldn't have somebody living on the property and drinking, and then them driving. You know, that's not a proper place for that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Rose DeLuca?
Good morning. My name is Rose DeLuca. My family lived in a home less than two-hundred feet from Mr. Flores' tire shop. My father, who is a hundred and one, still lives in the area. It is a neighborhood dear to my heart because I grew up there. Now, friends in the neighborhood tell me that there is an increase in noise, traffic, and graffiti. This bothers me terribly. What especially troubles me is that there might be a danger to children because of the tire debris. I understand the zoning laws prohibit the tire shop being placed in this area, and I agree. Thank you very much.
We already approved it. Give us your name. You seem to be the ringleader here.
Thank you. My name is Mary Nieswender, and I have a home, and have had home for seventy years in the area. I have, this is not a racial issue, this is not rich against poor. To summarize the activities for the council, Mr. Flores contacted Mr. Savornich's office before he bought his building, and Mr. Savornich's deputy told him he could not install tires at that location. Despite this, a month later, he opened up and began installing with no permit and no business license. When he attempted to build a giant door for his car business, the neighbors complained, and the building's safety inspector stopped him. He went down and got a permit for tire store only, no installation. All of his permits he has says, including his occupancy permit, say no installation. He is totally aware of that. He applied for a variance because it is a zone where it's not allowed, tire-related activities are not allowed, and this has been in effect since nineteen eighty-four. It was denied. He went before the appeal board, and they gave him a five-year delay with, so he could reduce his inventory. He was in, twenty-three conditions were imposed on Mr. Flores, and he told the council, he didn't know anything about conditions, but in a formal presented affidavit, he said he had met all twenty-three conditions. Gentlemen, ladies, he has not met any of those conditions. In January, we re-appealed that to the Plumb Committee, and I can't put it as eloquently as Councilman Burnson did, but basically he said, Mr. Savornich, pardon me, Mr. Flores has misrepresented to the council and to everyone else about his tire store, and he denied the permit. I request that you back up Mr. Burnson's decision and the Plumb Committee's decision.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll have those on the opposite side, Gabriel Flores Senior.
Good morning, members of the council. My name is Joe Baer. I'm one of the people on your cards there, and I'd like to speak first. I think I can summarize things and make it move a little quicker for you.
Okay, that's fine.
There were some statements that were made that were kind of critical, that are incorrect. This problem arises out of an unfortunate situation where Mr. Flores went to the city to find out if he could open a tire shop before he ever purchased this property. This property, he opened escrow on it in December, December fifteenth of nineteen ninety-eight. Before he did that, he went down to the city, he asked him if he could open a tire shop there. A lady pulled out a book and looked at him, and looked it up, and told him that he could do that. In reliance upon that statement, Mr. Flores then went, he bought the property, December fifteenth, he opened escrow. Escrow closed on January fourteenth, nineteen ninety-nine. Mr. Flores then began, he opened his shop, he started working on the shop, he developed it. At that point, he started applying for permits, and it was after he bought it, and I think the earliest date we have of anybody saying that he couldn't install tires there, the earliest that I've ever heard, although I haven't seen it, is late January nineteen ninety-nine. Now, at that point, Mr. Flores was told that he could sell tires there, but he couldn't install them. That was the first time Mr. Flores bought the property believing he could sell and install the tires, and went to all the efforts in order to do that. Since that time, Mr. Flores has applied for permits, he's improved the property, he's installed a doorway, he's resurfaced it, all in reliance on various permits issued by the city. He has incurred debt or actually paid money, that he's, a lot of which that he's had to borrow, in excess of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars to begin this project. Mr. Flores is here, and as part of this process, we've submitted letters and affidavits from hundreds of local residents, local businessmen, that all support Mr. Flores and the continued operation of his business. Mr. Flores cannot operate a tire store without being able to install the tires. It's like giving somebody a permit to open a restaurant, and then after they've started telling them they can't cook the food. Mr. Flores cannot continue in business, so if the planning board's resolution is adopted, you're basically putting this man out of business, in a business that he's incurred over a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to develop. And we would request that the board reject the appeal and adopt the Board of Zoning Appeals recommendations that were originally issued, which place restrictions on Mr. Flores. And by the way, as far as the restrictions are concerned, Mr. Flores has complied with those restrictions. There are some that are still up in the air, but I've been attempting to find myself if those conditions have been met or not. There were some signs that were installed, and I still haven't got confirmation from the city whether those signs are appropriate or not appropriate, and if they're not appropriate, he's going to take them down. In the event that there's any conditions that are applied on Mr. Flores for the continued operation of his business, he will comply with those. He just wants an opportunity to stay in business. Thank you very much.
Okay, does Mr. Flores want to be heard now?
Well, I just want to apologize with the families here if I've been inconvenient for them, and the only thing...
And the only thing I try to do is just do the best, support my family, kids. It's just been a great effort for me to be in business. Nobody knows the days and hours of a year and six months I spent trying to make a business go. I just tell you sorry, families, for all this trouble I'm giving you. Sorry.
Now, some of these cards are, I don't know, is there anyone else that wants to be heard in favor of this? We only have, we only have less than a minute, so if anybody wants to speak, you better. Give us your name, please.
Hi, I'm Luz Flores. I'm Gabriel Flores' wife. And I have somebody who lives in the apartment building. She lives in apartment number, number seven. And she says that she doesn't hear any noise or any dust. We just want to have an opportunity to sell and install tires. That's the only thing we're asking. We have three children, and if we go out of business, it's going to affect my whole family. We have signatures from the people who live in the building. We have about six or seven signatures saying that they don't hear any noise or any dust. And I don't see, they don't see any problems. Thank you.
My name is Roseanne DeLuca. I'm the owner of the apartment building next door to the tire shop. Contrary to what Mr. Flores told the Daily Breeze and Law Opinion.
Had, those opposed already spoke, your time is up, so we'll let you, you're going to be the last one to speak. What is your name?
I'm Hal Winston. I've known Gabriel Flores for five, 10 years. And I've been impressed with his athletic achievements and his work ethic. And I've become like a second father to him, and I care. And I'm a fairly colorblind person as far as people go. And I don't care what a person does, as long as their values and their contributions are what we want in our American society. The records show his permits are in order. We've heard a lot of statements made that are inflammatory at the last BZA that said all kinds of bad things about the business, which are not true. I'm sorry to have to say that. We prayed at this business for the people, all of the people. The facts are that Gabriel is well-liked by everybody. If he has a fault, it is being a very nice person. He helps everybody, even ladies who drive down the street who need their tire repaired before they go home can stop in his store. And this is eliminating one of those things, even kids with bicycle problems.
Mr. Winston, I think we've had enough, and thank you. We've gone beyond the five minutes.
Well, thank you, but.
Okay. We'll make all these other cards part of the file, so thank you.
I need to say that.
Yeah, go ahead and say it, but be quick.
I think that some people here are just opposed to this prosperous business.
Okay, thank you.
Which has done so well and is so well-liked, and the protest was stopped.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Savornic, I'm going to call on you first. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I would like to thank Mr. Bernson and the members of his committee for hearing this a couple of weeks back. This is a zoning issue in the proximity of 13th and Gaffey Street, colleagues in my district. And the problem that is before us is that the business does not meet the Q condition on the property. Back when it was entered into escrow, the gentleman who owns the business met with my staff and was informed that if indeed the business was purchased, that a conditional use permit would have to be requested because the property, while indeed he went to the Building and Safety Department to see whether or not you could sell tires at the site, we have documentation that clearly states from the Building and Safety Department, it says no installation. The applicant signed for that, and unfortunately, we're in a situation now where we have a gentleman who's invested quite a lot of money at the site, but then we have also the law, which needs to be adhered to. One of the things to which I am disturbed is that just yesterday, we checked with the city clerk's office, and what is of equally disturbing significance to me is that there is no recorded business license at the site either. And what bothers me is that this business has been operating since the 14th of January last year, 1999, and we have no record of a business license on file at the site. One of the other things to which disturbs me is that we need to be very clear that the documentation that the city has on file in regards to the applicant, it is very, very clear to me that the individual knew what they were signing. It's here in black and white, and they admit it, admit as so. But I don't feel that making a mistake in regards to the city should cost someone so much money either. I believe that there should be a period of time where an individual is able to recoup their investment and also come in conformance with the law. And while there are no Solomons among us, I'm going to try to come up with something here which is Solomonic. Of course, Mr. Holden would probably disagree, at least there is probably one Solomon among us. So what I would like to propose is as follows. Mr. Bernson, with the concurrence of you as committee chair and your committee, there are four things that we are asking to do. And on one of the things, it's to request the Building and Safety Department to come back within 30 days to verify the operator is in compliance. And I would like to ask that, number one, that the council reaffirm that the 23 conditions that have been asked, including the obtaining of a business license, be done immediately. And number two, that within 90 days, that the Department of Building and Safety be able to come back to make sure that we are in compliance with all the conditions. And if the conditions according to law are not able to allow the gentleman to continue doing business at the site, because right now it is not zoned for installation, that he has the commitment of my office and the offer of the mayor's business team to help him either relocate to a site where he can sell and install tires and/or allow him to sell the tires at the site without the installation. One of the things to which members deeply concerns me is that this gentleman does have other businesses like this. And I most certainly wouldn't want him to lose $170,000. I don't think any of the persons appealing would either. But we do have a Q condition at the site. The property was purchased knowing that you could not do this. The documents were signed, and which is of more egregious note to me, there's not even a business license here. And that really bothers me. So, Mr. President, members of the council, I would ask that you support the Plum Committee recommendations. However, on item number, on item number four, instruct the Department of Building Safety to make the person comply immediately on the 23 conditions and come back in 90 days to make sure that we can go forward with the least amount of loss to him while complying with law.
All right, thank you. Mr. Bernson, the chair of the committee.
Rudy, does that include no installation on the site?
Yes, within 90 days.
Okay. Let me just say that I think you're probably a lot more generous than I am or understanding. I, too, am always concerned for people in the business community who've made investments. But it was very clear that there was basically just thumbing their nose at the city on this particular case. In fact, the assertions that were made to us in the first meeting had me castigating the Building and Safety Department because of what they said. But when we had them back, we continued it and had Building and Safety come back, and it was very clear that all of the comments and all the remarks that were made were not correct. The signs were flagrant violation. The installation, it was very clear, made very clear that there was no permission for installation of tires at the site. Since the action has been taken place, I've seen pictures of how they've had signs plastered all over the sidewalk and all over the area there, talking about what the city was doing to them and so forth. In my opinion, and maybe you ought to hear this, Mr. Savornic, in my opinion, this is an individual that just doesn't care about obeying the law. But maybe you know a different side of him. I will go along with, Mr. Savornic, if you, you know, I will go along with your recommendation, but I think that it's very clear that this individual has to start obeying the law. I don't buy the fact that he didn't know. His attorney even says, even now, he claimed that some of the things are up in the air. Yeah, that illegal sign is still up in the air. And there was no permit for that either, okay? So, you know, obviously, there is a pattern here. Now, I don't know whether this individual has a sales tax permit, whether he's paying to, we don't know any of these things. This may very well be the case with what's going on. If this is a sample of how he deals with the city, we don't know how he's dealing with other agencies such as IRS and the State Board of Equalization. But I'm willing to go along with, this is your district, but I would really hope that we will make sure that there's enforcement in this thing. Because I think, I think there's very clearly been a daring the city to do something here, and I think that we need to make sure that he obeys the law. I have no desire to put anybody out of business. I have respect for anybody that has a business and the initiative to go out and try to do something for themselves, but they have to live with the rules that all of us have to abide by. And they do have an impact on the community around them. So, based upon Mr. Savornic's comment, I think, which is basically what the committee report was, wasn't it? Except for the 90 days? I think the committee said 30 days? Okay, well, I'll, we'll amend that to Mr. Savornic's, to 90 days. And I would concur with that and move for an amendment to the committee report, which would stretch that to 90 days.
Mr. Hernandez.
Mr. President, members of the council, I could see that aging is doing Mr. Savornic some good. I'm not sure about in Mr. Bernson's case, but, members, what we have here is basically, I believe, some fundamental misunderstandings and some opportunities. I think Mr. Flores is basically trying to do business in the city of Los Angeles and, quite frankly, found it much more difficult to understand. When I say that, as I understand, when I was at that first meeting, and I wasn't at the second meeting when the additional documentation was brought about, that Mr. Flores was always under the intent of establishing a tire sales business and installing them. No different than many businesses in many of our districts. And for whatever reason, he was not understanding that he could sell tires, he just couldn't install them there. Now, quite frankly, the reason that requirement exists is its location. It happens to be right next door to an apartment building. And in many instances, we look at apartment buildings as commercial establishments. That's why apartment owners are supposed to have business tax licenses, even though many of them don't. And the reality is, they're residences. It's where people live, it's where people sleep, it's where people basically raise their families. And so, to me, there's no question in my mind why those Q conditions would exist and why installation of tires might not be appropriate at that particular location. And so, again, I just wanted to rise to support Mr. Savornic's position, and it's because he represents the area and it's his constituents, and hopefully, we can help Mr. Flores do it right at the right place. There are businesses throughout the city that do have sales and don't install. Some people say, well, that's not the case with tires. Well, I think that there's a lot of businesses that only sell tires and don't install. But again, Mr. Flores is doing business in Los Angeles, and it's complicated. Sometimes when you're that small business and you have to come to this big bureaucracy and figure out how to do things, and I want to give him the benefit of that doubt. And that's why I want to support Mr. Savornic's position on it and at the same time, provide some clarity that we want to encourage people to want to do business in Los Angeles, regardless of the size of the business. But at the same time, we, as a council, have a responsibility to deal with the quality of life of the residents of the city. And I think that in this instance, we don't have much choice.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Sikowski.
As the third member of Plum, as you can hear, there were a lot, there was a lot of controversy on this. And Mr. Hernandez is right. At the first hearing, in fact, I think it was the sympathy of the committee members to believe that Mr. Flores had been misled, things had been confusing, there was not certainty. And we, in fact, we had demanded that Building and Safety come and give us a chronology and say how some of this had happened. And Mr. Hernandez, when you missed the second meeting, we in fact had Building and Safety there that was able to document back to January of 1999 to indicate that they had said to this applicant, yes, you can have retail, tire sales, but underlining no installation. That was repeated in 99, re-inspected and reaffirmed again throughout 99 and 2000, which is why he then asked for the variance. When the zoning administrator denied the variance, and then it was because the zoning administrator believed that the earlier Q conditions were very much like what we had done in many other neighborhoods. We take commercial areas and say we want to make them nice neighborhood-serving commercial. Retail makes sense, but not some of the heavy car mechanical kind of things. And that was the Q condition that was being reinforced. When it was appealed to the BZA, the BZA was sympathetic and granted it with conditions. One of the conditions said, no lights, all lights shall be shielded and directly onto the site. Members of the council, I think I can hold this up from here, and you can see lights that are not shielded and directed onto the site. So here is just another example where, when the BZA had been sympathetic, you had things that already were going on there, again, not in compliance. I think the two members of Plum who heard it the second time felt that things were very, very clear, very, very expressly indicated. We had testimony from Councilman Savornic's office that they, too, had indicated tire sales fine, but not installation. So the recommendation of the Plum Committee was to not grant the variance and to make sure that Building and Safety found compliance with everything else in 30 days. I think Mr. Savornic is accepting of that, but saying, give 90 days with full notice that this is no longer installation being allowed, but 90 days the business can stay there, be brought into compliance, and then work again with the mayor's business team to find another place where the full sales and installation can go forward. This is a retail area, meant to be a retail area, that's what the Q conditions reinforced, that's what Building and Safety's complete history on this case says, and that's why I think the Plum Committee made that recommendation. But I think the modification as recommended by Mr. Savornic to allow 90 days for this to be brought into compliance makes sense.
All right, Mr. Holden.
Mr. Savornic called me Solomon. It's all right.
We call you a lot of other things, too, Nate.
I like that one. Take the oath and you keep it. I just want to say, Mr. President, members, that I, if I had to vote on this, if Mr. Savornic had not made his amendment, I would 100% support Mr. Bernson and Ms. Sikowski. Anytime anybody accumulate this kind of a business economics standing, status in this community, got to know what you're doing. Got to know what the business is all about. You got to know what the rules are. If you have more than one facility, you should have known what the rules are. And it just reminds me of what happened in my community on Crenshaw Boulevard, when a gentleman moved in there and he says, I'm going to have a hardware store. And he ended up trying to establish a junkyard, old vehicles. And he said he had other businesses at which he was successful at. We went over to the Ninth District and some of the other districts and took photographs of it. And he was planning on doing the same thing over there on Crenshaw Boulevard, which would stop the economic growth in that community. We had to fight him over and over again. And it was only because we had declared that area, redevelopment area, that we were able to stop him. Had that not been the case, the situation that's happening in your district, Rudy, would have happened right there, and our hands would have been tied. Because it had been after the fact, one elected official here in the city says, go ahead and do what you want to do and then try to explain it later. And it seemed to me that this guy's pretty foxy. I don't care what they say. Those people who are supporting his point of view should have told him where he was off base. They should have corrected him. And now, since they didn't, then he should pay the price for it, so he'll never do it again. I mean, I really support Bernson and I support Ms. Sikowski in this issue. I wouldn't give him another day to correct the problem. I would close the door on him today because people there suffered. Those light, my.
I talk to him, Tony.
Those light, my, I gotta take my time.
You don't have to take all the time. Well, you made your point very well.
You always take my time away from me, Mr. Flores. You owe me 45 minutes.
Okay, 45 minutes, okay. All right, Mr. Swornich to close?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I, I do appreciate your comments in regards to this very complicated issue. But I do believe that we have a solution here that not only, uh, meets the requests of the appellants, but I also think that it goes a great deal in to make sure that Mr. Flores's, uh, financial bottom line isn't damaged to the extent that he can't recover, and I don't think the applicants want that. They just want to make sure that it conforms within law and everything is done according to, according to city standard. Uh, I do appreciate, uh, the time that has been taken to address this issue, because it has been a complicated issue. But I do believe that the 23 conditions that have been imposed upon Mr. Flores, those conditions need to be taken care of immediately. I also believe that he needs to go out and get that business license immediately. And then I also do believe that he should seriously consider the offer that has been made by this office as well as the mayor's office to assist in regards to either marketing his existing business at the site, another way where he can come in compliance in regards to the non-installation, or to take up our offer in regards to relocating the business to an area that he can be full service. I mean, no one wishes him ill will. However, we do have a Q condition, and we have to conform with the law. What I have seen to date, Mr. President, members of the council, has not been a willingness to conform with the law. What I have seen is either an opportunity of not being knowledgeable of the law, or for some reason not trying to educate oneself in regards to what one had to do. And I find that argument a little taxing in regards to, this is not the first business of the sort that is opening. This is one of a few owned by the same individuals. Unfortunately, they should have known a little bit better. But I think what we've come up here is something that's reasonable for all parties in order to fix the situation without causing that much financial damage to the, to the individual, but while conforming to the rule of law as, as protested here by, by the appellants. And so I would ask for your I vote.
Okay. We have item number one, motion by Mr. Swornich.
To amend, uh, recommendation number four to 90 days instead of 30 days.
All right, prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is, that is approved. We have to, that's it?
Do you want to do that as amended?
Yeah, let's prepare the roll as a, on item number one as amended, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with on that, and also fourth with on 34.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, Ms. Goldberg?
Padilla, Councilmember Padilla, would you like to join me for this? Um, we have the folks here from Luminaryus, are they here? Ah, there you are. How are you? Well.
Thank you.
You bet. You bet. You bet. You bet. Mr. President, uh, members of the council, Luminaryus, written by Evelina Fernandez, was first a critically acclaimed box office hit, did I do something wrong? Oh, okay. Stage production for Latino Theater Company at the Los Angeles Theater Center. The film, directed by Jose Luis Valenzuela and produced by Sal Lopez, sets out to examine a contemporary struggle of women with identity, independence, sexuality, and the prejudices through women's relationships, foibles, and sometimes humorous life experiences. Luminaryus is one of a very few films about Latinas and the issues that affect their lives. For the first time, all these elements have been brought together to create a uniquely humorous and entertaining film with great insights that portray Latinas as I believe they have not been seen before on the big screen. In addition to starring Evelina Fernandez, who has performed in many television series and many films, including American Me, for which she won the prestigious Nosotros Golden Eagle Award, the film also stars Scott Bakula, Robert Beltran, Angel, Angela Moya, Saidi Lopez, Sal Lopez, Chich Marin, and the wonderful Lupe Ontiveros. The film was produced by Sleeping Giant Productions, which consists of the wife-husband team of Evelina Fernandez and the film's director, Jose Luis Valenzuela, and well-known actor, producer Sal Lopez. Sleeping Giant, of course, you know, refers, uh, to a, an appellation now being given to the perception of the Latino, Latina community's growing impact on politics in the United States and of course, in California and Los Angeles. Uh, and now, of course, we see the impact growing on the entertainment industry as well. Sleeping Giant Productions is committed to thought-provoking films where Latinos can express themselves not only to their own community, but also to a wider audience. It's coupled with New Latin Pictures to distribute the film. And in this film, about the contemporary lives of Latinas, it's written by a Latina and actually stars Latinas in Latina roles. And I say that because that's not always what we get on the big screen. But this is really, what, a film not only was an act of love by the entire community because Evelina and Jose Luis and producer Sal Lopez approached their friends, their family members, entrepreneurs, professionals in the community to generate the money to produce the film. In a year and a half, they raised slightly less than a million dollars needed to film and complete it. Individual investors and donors, from doctors and factory owners to their next-door neighbors, gave between $540,000 to help bring this film to the big screen. Stars were paid standard wages, but the crews worked on deferred payment. And at the premiere, an anonymous donor gave a five-figure donation to help pay post-production costs. These stories are typical of the sentiment and support generated by a community that has taken this picture to heart. I hope that everyone hears about this movie, will go see it, Luminaryus, when it opens this weekend, because I know once you do, you will see that the faith and talent that went into making it, and you will take it into your heart as well. Uh, here to accept this certificate with all our best wishes are the film's star and writer Evelina Fernandez and her husband, the film's director, Jose Luis Valenzuela. And before they speak, I think my colleague, Mr. Padilla, would also like to add a few words.
So, thank you, Councilmember Goldberg. There's three words I hear a lot at home, uh, certainly hear it in the office, I hear it from my friends, and come this Friday, we're gonna hear it in movie theaters across the Southwest at least. And those three words are, "Viva la mujer."
All right, all right.
The, it's, it's, it's a privilege and an honor to, to stand here and really call attention and bring this recognition, uh, to the Luminaryus movie and project, because it really has been a labor of love, I'm sure, for all those involved. And it's just another way in which we can leverage our position as elected officials to bring more diversity, more talent, and more creativity to the entertainment industry. I know in the Information Technology Committee, we're working with the cable industry in that same effort. So with that, my heartfelt congratulations and best wishes, uh, to Evelina and Jose Luis, and thank you for joining us today.
Thank you very much.
And we present them with the traditional happiness is.
Great.
Happiness is the opening of Luminaryus.
Oh, wonderful, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. A few words, go right ahead. Microphone's yours for about a minute.
Go ahead, say.
Uh, thank you very much. This is quite an honor for us and our, our little movie, and we hope that everybody will come and support it. And this city council has always been very supportive of all of our work from the Latino Theater Company. Mike Hernandez has always supported our work, and we appreciate that very much. And we, um, this is a gift, this Luminaryus is a gift, and it's a celebration of the diversity of this beautiful city, Los Angeles. This isn't just about Latinas, it's about Latinas meeting Koreans, and Latinas meeting Jews, and Latinas falling in love with undocumented workers. And, and we hope that you will all join the celebration of this city with this, by coming and supporting this movie this weekend. It's so important for us because this is an independent film but, made by the Latino community for the very first time, and we're asking everybody to come and see this movie this weekend and bring 10 people with you. So, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Very, very.
Thank you, Ms. Goldberg and Mr. Padilla.
You get the pictures?
Okay, uh, the next, uh, we have, the next item is item five.
Yeah.
And, uh, we have a lot of people who want to be heard on this. As we all know, we've had public hearings on this already. Uh, so, I'm gonna call on Mr. Swornich. You call five special?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Uh, this is, um, a second reading ordinance in regards to this item, and some of the concerns that I brought up, uh, last week were in regards to some of the punitive, uh, punitive measures that were targeting some of the retailers in regards to the tobacco sales. And while most certainly, uh, I am not a, an apologist for the tobacco industry, one of the things to which I am concerned is the overall detriment that it can have on some of the retailers who happen to sell tobacco products in their stores and how that could affect some of their businesses. A lot of them are mom and pops, a lot of them are, uh, members of, of franchise organizations. And one of the things to which I am very concerned is that the way that the law is written now, you could have, for example, a clerk who is inexperienced, a clerk that pops, possibly doesn't know what they were doing in regards to this new issue, and the way that the law is written, you could have all three violations in one day. And which would then, for the, for practical purposes, not be able to continue the sales, hurt the business, and then the owner and/or the manager not be able to have any time to, to address the issue. And what I would like us to do while passing the ordinance, I think there must be a way for us that if you had a small mom and pop store, or if you had a, a group of franchisees, and you had one clerk on the same day sell a tobacco product within three hours of each other, then that business effectively could be shut down without the owner and/or manager having any effective time to remedy the situation. I think there needs to be some mechanism built into this ordinance where you would be able to remedy after the warning. For example, someone could come in at 10 o'clock, they could make, they could make the error of selling, the owner not know it, someone come in at 11:30, do the same thing, and someone come in at 2 o'clock, and the same thing happened, all within the employment of that same clerk during their eight-hour business day. And there's no way to remedy it. And so I think, Mr. President, members of the council, while I agree with the ordinance, I just want to make sure that we are not doing anything that's over punitive in regards to someone not being able to remedy the situation. I understand very well, and I don't have a problem in regards to the violations anymore. I just think that there is no time that is been allowed for within the scope of this ordinance that would allow a conscientious business owner, or a conscientious business manager, or a franchisee to take any corrective action once the action is brought to their attention, especially if it is not brought to their attention after a series of violations have occurred. And so, I don't know how we work our way around that, Mr. President, members of the council, but I think it's a concern of the small retailer, I think it's a concern of the mom and pop operation, I most certainly want to be supportive in regards to making sure that tobacco sales are kept away from minors. But I want to make sure also that they are given a chance to fix the situation if they are warned and/or cited.
All right, thank you. Mr. Fuer?
Mr. President, I was gonna move the previous question. That's not gonna happen, so let me speak. You gotta move fast on this, I think.
Your, your time is up.
I got it. Uh, Mr. McCosker, could you join us at the front table for a second? Um, Tim, I, I wanted to very quickly get your reaction to the concern that the ordinance as drafted is unduly punitive.
President, members of the council, thank you very much. We've had an opportunity to briefly review a couple of proposed amendments that relate to that question.
Yeah, there are no amendments on the table, just in general.
We think the ordinance is not unduly punitive. In fact, we think it's very fairly drafted to provide opportunities, uh, to the business to, in a sense, have, have a gradual, uh, increase of their violations lead to, uh, more drastic measures.
Could you quickly go through, again, for everyone's edification, what those gradual measures are?
I'm gonna ask either Chuck Goldenberg or Richard Bob to run through the, the progress of the ordinance.
Yeah, just very concisely, please.
Well, the first thing you have to, President, members of the council, the first thing you have to understand is that we don't do anything with a license until there's already been some kind of adjudication from another agency. Most notably, it would be the Stake Act. So the Stake Act, people would run their administrative process and have all the due process that is necessary before they can find a violation and then send that to us. So the specific example that you gave before, Councilswornich, if in fact, one clerk had done it three times, and if in fact, there was a sting operation three times in one day, which is very unlikely, they would consider that, and they would probably reduce it to one violation. I mean, it, it is theoretically possible, but, um, it's my understanding they're not gonna be anywhere near three in one day, there probably won't be three in, in one year.
And we, as the city attorney's office, can assure you that if we had multiple violations in one day, we, who make the ultimate decision on the licensing, would consider it only one. It would not, that's a, that's a, an extreme hypothetical situation, and we can assure you that we would prosecute it if it came to that as only one. And indeed, don't forget, the first violation of this ordinance, which may be the only ordinance of its kind, calls for a warning. I don't think there are many places in law where you find that we institutionalize the fact that the first time at that is a warning.
All right, let, let me, just 'cause my time's about up. I, I just wanted to say, first, happy birthday to Mr. Swornich. Secondly, um, you know, Rudy expressed his support for the concept of the ordinance, expressing concern only about whether it was unduly harsh in the way it would be carried out. I think the city attorney has addressed the fact that it won't be unduly harsh, it provides warnings, it provides there's discretion in the city attorney's office to handle this in a common sense way. I urge that we adopt the ordinance as drafted as quickly as possible, put it in the field, get it to work, and take the first steps that we have taken in a long time to assure that underage consumers don't have access to tobacco.
All right, thank you. Mr. Hernandez?
If I can get that same support for bullets, we'll be batting a thousand, yeah, for bullets. Uh, Mr. President, members of council, and I need the city attorney's office to answer a few questions for me, because my understanding, and I wasn't here for the first reading, one, there was a press conference announcing the ordinance, and then the debate came about before the council, um, and everybody's running for some office. Uh, so, uh, my real concern in this regard is what other city has an ordinance like this in the state of California?
Um, the city of, well, the city of New York, the city of Boston.
The state of California.
Uh, in, um, there was a packet that the council got, there are over 130 different jurisdictions that have this same kind of ordinance that has proven very effective. I don't have that.
In the state of California, Mr. But, you know.
Uh, I believe it's San Francisco.
Okay, so San Francisco has one similar to ours?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Now, in their ordinance, do they basically provide a warning?
No.
They don't provide a warning?
That's correct.
Okay, good. Now, when we contemplate this process, most of the notification to the city is gonna come to us through another agency.
That's correct.
Okay. Now, and this whole issue of five years' violation, I want to make sure I clear up something Mr. Swornich said. If someone has five violations in five years.
Yes.
We then withdraw their permit to sell tobacco.
For one year.
For one year. We don't withdraw their permission to sell any other goods.
That's correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because we don't close down the business. Now, members of the council, the reason I wanted to ask these questions is because, uh, what I'm concerned about, as basically someone who deals with economic development policies of the city, is that we're not putting something that basically is above and beyond what we need to do to compete with other cities. And that's an important key, because economic development's important. I don't want Savon coming to me telling me they don't want to open stores in LA in certain communities because of this tobacco ordinance. And I don't think that's gonna happen. That's why I needed to. That's why I needed the clarification on the questions. But I think it's important that we understand that because of Prop. 10, we have a most effective tool with dealing with addiction of tobacco, and that's education. It's not the enforcement part that stops people from using, it's the education part that stops people from using. And I don't want to mislead people by saying that we're passing laws that's going to stop young people from using. What we need to do is make sure we're educating them and using our resources in that direction. And I just want to make that statement very public, because we've got to make sure our young people understand the hazards of smoking, because once they're addicted, I mean, they got to deal with it as adults. And, you know, I was someone who's dealt with several addictions, and tobacco was one of them, and I don't smoke anymore, and it's a whole different world for me. And so again, I will support the ordinance based on those reasons. I just wanted some clarity as to what the ordinance is doing, and I don't want the city to be put in an undue advantage in terms of other kinds of components.
Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, most of the questions for clarification have been posed already by Councilmember Fuhr and Councilmember Hernandez. I wanted to stand up again this week, just like we did last week, in support of the ordinance, as is currently before the city council. Councilmember Fuhr pointed out that there's no amendments on the desk, and I like that, I appreciate that. And as we, if we get into the discussion of the amendments, I think the ordinance as it currently is presented before us is tough enough, but not too tough. I think it's very moderate, but very aggressive, at the same time in helping to curb illegal sales of tobacco, particularly to youth, and urge, again, council members, your support.
Mr. Burnson.
Mr. President, members of the council, I voted for this before because I strongly believe that we need to do something about the problem. I do have some reservations about when we do these things, though, part of which was expressed by Mr. Hernandez and by Mr. Savornich. I don't think that enforcement is the only thing that's going to do this, but it certainly is a deterrent, if they can't buy tobacco products. What bothers me is that this should not be something the city is doing on its own. It ought to be state and federal legislation. And that's not happening, unfortunately. Now, you know, it does put us at a little bit of a disadvantage. I would hope that some of the money that's being used from the tobacco fund would be used to educate the people who sell tobacco, as well as those who are potential youth who may use it. And I think that is a very important factor, and if we're not considering that point, we need to educate the people who are going to actually confront the buyers on how to deal with it, and how to make sure that minors are not able to buy tobacco. Actually speaking, we don't allow drugs to be sold because they're killers. Tobacco also kills. It isn't just the addiction, it's the health risks. So I'm really in a dilemma, because I hate to, I always consider myself to be at least friendly to business, but on the other hand, we have a very serious problem. And I would hope that, Alex, maybe you're listening to this, this bill would go into effect in 30 days, is that correct, if it's signed by the mayor? Is there a possibility that we could spend a period of time prior to the enactment of this, in educating, perhaps spending some time educating, and working with the sellers, with the grocery people, and those who have retail businesses that have to deal with the public, in an educational process, or at least so they would be familiar with the components of the law? Is that possible?
President, members, actually, there is a component currently in the proposal. When the licensed material goes out to the business owners, it includes a packet of information from interest groups and from the city, indicating the health risks, the applicable laws, and of course, an overview of the entire ordinance.
Why is it, why is the permit necessary? Why, I mean, we're not charging for the permit, there's going to be a cost to the city. Why is the permit necessary? We, you know, basically, unless we're going to go out and enforce, which I hope we are, whether there's a permit or not permit, we generally know who's selling cigarettes, I think, don't we?
Well, actually, what the permit does for us is a number of things. One, it gives us an opportunity to inform the sellers, as you just indicated. It also gives us an opportunity to have a very accurate, current, up-to-date database as to who's out there. Gives us an opportunity to create the plan for enforcement, and it also creates the enforcement mechanism at the tail end of the process when there's repeated violations by a business.
Okay, as I say, I have very mixed emotions on this thing, but I do think that we have a responsibility to lead the way, as we have done in other areas.
Okay, thank you.
Sometimes it's not popular, but I would suggest, Alex, perhaps, Alex, perhaps you might want to try to encourage state legislation that would pattern this, so it would be something that would, would apply to all the agencies within the state, not just the city.
Okay. Mr. Pacheco. Talk to Nate Holden about.
Mr. President, colleagues, I received a request from Mr. Benson from the Southern California Business Association to look into two issues. One was the one-year versus five-year debate. Let me just say that I disagree with the position that a one-year time should be used. The five-year one seems appropriate. From my perspective, I look at this sort of, and excuse me for always being a prosecutor, but when we deal with people who drive under the influence, it's a seven-year time window because we don't want them to have a clean slate too quickly, because it's a very serious problem. Well, very similarly, if someone is exposing our youth to tobacco, or making it readily available, we don't want to give them a easy time, we want to make sure that it's a very serious matter that we counter with the restrictions. So five years seems more appropriate to me. The issue about informing a retailer to, give retailers the opportunity to immediately abate a problem situation once a violation has occurred, as I understand, I've spoken with Councilmember Padilla, and I understand in six months, we're going to give this a second look to see how it's going in terms of implementation. So Mr. Padilla assured me that we would then have an opportunity to look at these issues with some real information and some real data as to how it's working out. So I, I feel confident that if it becomes a problem at the six-month period, with proper information, we can make adjustments if necessary. So I just wanted to put that on the record for everyone, so, thank you.
Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, you know, I have to say that we would not have this discussion today if, if I didn't vote no and hold this ordinance up last week. I didn't vote for it, so you just need one vote to withhold for further discussion. I might say that you've got to ask the question, would you, as a businessperson or as a parent, give your car, the keys to your car, to a minor, 14, 15, 16, whatever age, if they don't have a driver's license? They don't have a permit with a licensed driver in their vehicle? I think the answer would be, heck no, you wouldn't do that, in some cases. Some cases, people, you know, they don't really care, so they violate the law, rules, regulation, whatever you have on the board at the time. What they're presenting today, and as they did last week, in my view, was weak, not strong enough. If you're going to legislate in this area, tobacco limitations, sales, then be tough about it. That's what my opinion was. And I also said, raised the question whether or not we had legislative authority to legislate in this area, and if we were preempted by state or federal law from doing so. Well, I can answer you what the answer is. I talked to Brian Gregory, who's the Legislative Council for the state legislature. And the answer to this is that he commends the city attorney for adopting legislation that, in which they can legislate. Shocked me. We were not preempted by state law, we're not preempted by federal law, and they are on the right grind here, solid grinds legislating, and it cannot be challenged in court, according to the Legislative Council, and so you can throw that out the window. I, as I said, I don't think it's tough enough. What I'm going to propose, and I might have to go to committee if I can get a second on it, that when those, in those cases where the licenses are suspended, how do we know they're suspended? Hang a sign in a conspicuous place that there's a permit to sell cigarettes. And when there's no longer a permit to sell cigarettes, for any reason, they have to display a sign saying, that permit has been suspended, for the time period that it has been suspended. Now, if we amend the ordinance today, it's going to go over another week, so I'm not prepared to do that. But I will take it to committee, and we will amend this ordinance to make it, put some more teeth in it, and to make it so stringent where we can get the effect that we want, that under no circumstances are you going to give your car keys to your minor's son or daughter, whomever, to drive your car if they don't have a permitted license? And likewise, and I have more time, you're not going to sell cigarettes to minors or to John Ferrara. He drinks, he smokes cigars.
I'm a minor, I'm still a minor. All right, Mr. Savornich.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I think that there might be an opportunity here, in order to go forward with the ordinance with just a minor change, which would provide the type of protections that I think a retailer should deserve, even though we want to crack down on the sales of tobacco to minors. Under the ordinance, and I would like to move this as a motion, Mr. President, it says, under Section 46.99b, permit suspensions, the way it reads right now, it says, well, what it says right now is that in any one-year period, the tobacco retailer shall receive a letter of reprimand from the city attorney. What I would like to move, Mr. President, is that for the first violation, is that the party responsible for conducting any investigation of the tobacco retailer shall immediately notify the offender on site and in writing that a violation has occurred, rather than a letter of reprimand following it sometime later in the mail, and that the retailer be given 48 hours to comply. Because in that way, I think that closes the loophole for these repeat violations, even though I know that they're probably not going to happen, and even though I know that the preponderance of it being able to happen is not, is not great, and I have the reassurances from the city attorney's office saying that we would treat it as one violation, that's an arbitrary decision. And what I think would be fair is if someone is cited, cite them on the site, and let the owner or the manager know that they've been cited, they have 48 hours to correct, and then, if they don't correct, the letter of reprimand follows. And then that gives them some due process, and I think that's fair. The rest of it, let's go.
Okay, did I hear a second?
Mr. Wax.
Mr. President, if we can allow the city attorney to respond to that, I, Mr. President, members of the city, Mr. President, members of the council, the city attorney's office is opposed to that type of amendment, and we would urge the amendment not to be passed for a couple of reasons. One is the citing immediately at the location creates a problem with the confrontation with the, with the business owner. But secondly, and probably more importantly, these are inspections that are conducted undercover, and it's important with as few resources as we're going to have to maintain that undercover operation, immediately citing the business owner then blows essentially the undercover operation and puts us in a position where we're going to have a greater cost in personnel.
No, you, you, you gave, you gave your time up, and he's now responding. Mr. Padilla's asked him to respond.
It'll create a greater personnel cost to the program and probably a lower frequency of enforcement, because costs will be spent on other inspectors.
Mr. Padilla.
I would, I would add also that we are using, we are contracting in order to preserve resources, the program we're contracting with the state inspectors, and this is the program that the state inspectors desire to use.
All right, Mr. Padilla, you want to come?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for that clarification. I think it's a great example of showcasing not only how strong and intact the ordinance is currently before us, but amendments either from Councilmember Savornich, ideas from the Councilmember Pacheco and others, that would seek to strengthen the program would actually weaken it, as you've pointed out. So I wanted to thank you for that clarification, and again, urge a vote in favor of the ordinance as presented to us.
All right, Mr. Burnson.
You know, Mr. Savornich has raised, I hope the city attorney's watching, listening, because I need to, there's something I need to clarify. You say that you don't want to, you want to avoid confrontation. How are we to know if somebody did violate? I mean, we just have a situation where if there's not going to be a confrontation at the point, in a citation, they're going to be notified by letter. How can they defend themselves? Are they going to be considered guilty without trial, or what?
No, there's due process built into the ordinance.
What is the due process? Hold my time on this, Mr. President, because this, we need to answer this.
Councilmember, I think the first thing you have to understand is that the Stake Act, the state investigators are going to do the investigation. They're going to send a teenager in to attempt to buy tobacco, and it's all going to be recorded. So it'll be recorded by videotape, very sophisticated videotape.
I see.
Then, once they have their evidence, they will send their letter to the tobacco retailer saying that you have been found.
So enforcement is going to be strictly by sting, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
We're not going to do any enforcement, it's going to be strictly state?
It's going, the state is going to be contracted by us to do these sting operations. They are going to pursue their state remedies, which involve due process and potential fines. Once all that due process has been terminated, and there's a final outcome, then they will send us a letter saying that the tobacco retailer has been found in violation of the Stake Act, and then, if it's the first time in five years, then we send our letter of reprimand. So we don't send a letter of reprimand until they've already been convicted by a state agency.
Okay, that answers my question. I thought maybe there may be a problem there. There's one other thing I would like to do, and I don't know whether it's appropriate to do it as part of this legislation, or make the motion separately, but I'd like to move that we sponsor state legislation to parallel the actions that the city is going to take. And with, if they do that, then I'll support this.
Second in the motion, send to the committee.
Ms. Galanter. Ms. Galanter moves the previous question. Prepare the roll on the previous question.
I wanted to do that, Mr. President.
Prepare the roll on the previous question. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes, five noes.
That is approved. Now we have, what do we have first, Mr. Savornich's motion?
No, second.
Yeah, Mr. Wax seconded.
Yes, Mr. Savornich's motion to notify the, when the party responsible for the investigation should notify the offender on site and in writing, and the retailer would have 48 hours to comply, and if not, a letter of reprimand would follow.
Okay, prepare the roll on that. Tabulate the vote.
Seven ayes, eight noes.
That failed. Now we have the ordinance as. What is your motion, Mr. Burnson?
Sponsor state legislation to parallel our ordinance.
Well, that has, that has nothing, but just bring in a motion, Mr., the chairman of the committee will take care of that. He's got, he's got influence in Sacramento. Prepare the roll on the second reading ordinance. Tabulate the vote. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith on that. Ms. Goldberg, did you want a public hearing on 29? If you do, we'll call, keep it on the desk.
Mr. President, before they leave, I just wanted to commend the city attorney's office for their hard work on this issue, and all the community members who came out and really put months of work into bringing the success in the city of Los Angeles.
Mr. President, what if we limit it to one for and one against, and we do it now?
It's all right with me, but who's going to be the one and who's going to be the one?
Well, I'll let them decide. One for, one against, and we do it now. Yes, that's fine. Take the against first.
Okay, because we're going to take up, we're going to take up 26 next, after this item. Who is, who's going to speak?
Is there anyone against?
Yeah, there's a Richard Gray.
Richard Gray? Okay, let him speak first, then have one for.
Go ahead, Mr. Gray.
Good morning. My name is Richard Gray, and I'd like to state that I am against the closure of this alley. This alley is necessary to provide access to the businesses for loading, for circulation. Glendale Boulevard is an overpass, or Sunset is an overpass at Glendale. So the only way to get onto Sunset is to go through this alley, or go around several blocks to get back to the business district. Yesterday, I submitted to Mr. Wax a petition with 850-plus signatures. Yesterday, I submitted to Mr. Wax a petition with 850-plus signatures. All, many, many business owners, small proprietors could not be here to attend, but I, hopefully I speak for them. This alley is important to them. There's a furniture store on this alley. They get deliveries from a semi. The semi will no longer be able to go into this alley. There's no way for it to turn around or back out. They just go through, the trash trucks, they go through. There is a circulation issue here that is important. There is a report dated April 17th from the city engineer. I haven't seen this report. This whole process is just being, I don't know, it's, it's going so fast that I can't keep up with it. There's been a lot of effort from Ms. Goldberg and everybody here to create this project, this Central Pueblo Recreation Center. But I don't think there's been time to properly evaluate it. I would request that more time be given to evaluate this. I understand there is some deadline with Proposition K monies, but from what I understand, talking to the people upstairs, if the money isn't used during the funding period, it goes back into the pool and can be reallocated in the next funding period. It's not lost, it's still there. The money is still there to be spent.
Not on this project.
You can't reapply?
Well, and roll the dice.
The money is still there. The money is in the bank. A worthy project is certainly.
Just give us your.
Okay.
Don't respond to Ms. Goldberg. Ms. Goldberg, just let them speak.
Okay. Your, your time is about up. I have not had time to get competent advice on what these things are. I haven't ever seen the city engineer's report. I request more time. I request a no vote on this. This alley is important to the businesses, for circulation, for shoppers, and for loading.
All right, you made that point. Now, what, do we have Norma Campos, who do you?
Is that who we want? Robert Aguayo, I think, is the one person that would be speaking.
Okay, Robert.
And then maybe everybody who is here in favor could just stand up while he's speaking, so you'd know who they are.
My name is Robert Aguayo, the director of program at Centro de Pueblo, longtime resident of the area, former team client of the, of the community center, and have been working at Centro de Pueblo for over 22 years. We've expanded, since 1974, we expanded from a staff of five people to having over 40 staff members, and with the help of a lot of people, including the city council, we've been able to bring a lot more services to the community. And we are now asking for your support again in providing additional type of services that we have never provided in the past, namely a recreation sports field. We feel that with this additional type of services, we're going to be able to service more young people, we're going to be able to have them there longer, so that they're not, not on the streets, unsupervised, and we're going to be able to have a bigger impact on their lives besides just doing the type of counseling and family services that we're doing. This is a very important project for our community, and we feel that we can really have an impact on the community for long term, and we can really divers the type of services that we are doing. So we'd like to thank you for considering our requests, and we have had a lot of people come to show the support, and we have had over a thousand signatures in support of this project. And this is not the first time that we've come here, well, not here, but the first time we've dealt with this issue. It's been going on for approximately three years. We've looked at other locations, and at this point, this is the best location, and we have everything in place to, in order to go forward. All we need now is your support and your votes. Thank you.
Okay, wait. These, these were all the cards that were speaking in favor. So Ms. Goldberg, you have the floor.
Yes, the alley closure does include a turnaround space. We are protecting nine parking spaces. Part of the alley, the only part of the closure is at the east end of the alley to make it possible for the young people and their families to cross from the street to the recreation area in order to not have to worry about getting hit by a car while they do that. It's a liability and safety issue. But there will be a wide space for turnaround, and we have already talked with the fire department about the access for emergency vehicles. All of that will be made available and, and will be possible with the way it is being designed. It just will be closed at the eastern end, at La Moine side, in order to protect the safety of the families that will be using the outside area. I ask again for an aye vote, so that we can hold on to almost a million dollars of Prop K funding for this program. We've been working on it for three years, two other locations fell through. One of the things that's difficult in an area that's densely populated is finding locations for projects. That's one of the reasons why we have so few areas for recreation, is because there's so much pressure. But we are applying under Prop 12 and 13 for funding to try to work on underground parking for the area under this project. We are also going to be working with the church that is interested in a public-private partnership to address parking. We are going to look at this every way we can, but we must have a place for young people to be supervised by adults in this community, and I ask for your help in this project.
Okay, we have item, item 29. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes, one no.
That is approved. We, we'd ask you, forthwith, and we'd ask you to leave quietly if you're going to leave. You're welcome to stay, of course. Now, we're going to take up item 26, which is.
Mr. President, I understand item 26 may be a long matter. I have item 33, which should be a short matter, maybe.
Well, we have a lot of people want to be heard on it.
I already talked to the representatives and told them that they couldn't, the whole thing shouldn't take more than five minutes on their presentation or their speaking. On 33?
Yeah.
I already talked to them, and they get five minutes maximum, I told them.
Okay, okay, then we'll, then we'll hold off on 20, 26.
I know there's a lot of people.
You have an amendment first, why don't you explain the amendment?
Sure.
Maybe they won't need to talk if they're, yeah.
President, I was told 26 is going to be a short matter, too. Is that incorrect?
Yeah, that's, yeah, they're all short.
Thank you.
Except when Nate starts asking questions.
Can I have the people from 33 come to the microphone, so we can present this? I'll, I'll give, I'll do your.
Do your motion.
The original, the amendment is that if you received a packet in green, you'll see that the streets that we're talking about is a residential street on Boyle between, excuse me, residential street of Seventh Street between Boyle and Soto Street, and there's an entrance to the Five Freeway there. It's lined up by residents on both sides. Initially, we were requesting a tonnage limit, and to begin the process of going through the city attorney and the Department of Transportation does agree with us on this matter, to limit the tonnage on Seventh Street, and it turned out that there was a loophole that the trucks could, could go down South Breed Street and enter the Five and just momentarily be on Seventh, so we wanted to make sure that that did not occur. So the amendment is to not only include Seventh Street, but South Breed Street between Whittier Boulevard and Seventh. So that's the amendment. On the issue itself, it really comes down to the fact, and I passed out for all of you not only a green folder with photos, but today some Polaroid photos in black and white copies, where we have 18-wheel diesel trucks coming down the residential street, and unfortunately, when the Five gets congested, they are unable to enter the freeway efficiently, so it ends up causing a lineup of vehicles, and the vehicles then are idling and emitting the diesel exhaust at all these residential streets. And so what we're trying to do is for this one block area, roughly about two or three blocks, I should say, is limit the tonnage so that the diesels will use alternative routes on Santa Fe Avenue, Olympic Avenue, Alameda, and San Mateo in the industrial part of the district. And we have some residents here who will briefly speak on the matter, Mr. President, and, and they are going to be brief.
Would you give your, your name, please?
Good morning, Mr. President. My name's Ezekiel Perez. I live at 24.
Pull that up.
I live at 2471 East Seventh Street, and I took most of the pictures with Margarita. Sanchez right here took some of the pictures, and I wrote some of the statistical data that you have in front of you. The green folder has the pictures that are represented in front of you here, and we're talking about a tonnage limitation. The problem has been when they built the freeway 30, 35 years ago, it was an easy access to the freeway, but now with the exponential growth of traffic, it's created a big problem in the community. And aside from that, it creates a big danger to three schools that are nearby. There's two elementaries, one daycare center, and a private school, Silesian High School, which is a lot of, we feel it imposes a great danger to the community from the toxic emissions from the diesel trucks. And aside from that, the community, there's been a large outbreak of asthma and cancer with the residents. And I would like to turn it over now to Ms. Sanchez, so she can continue the, the talk, but I would like to thank Mr. Nick Pacheco for working with us, city councilman, and the Department of Transportation has also been receptive to our urges to shut it down or, or put some tonnage limitations. Thank you.
You want to speak next?
My name is Belia Laguna. Yo vivo en 1026, 26 Sur.
What is your name, please?
Belia Laguna. Me pegó cancer en la pierna y en el pulmón. Mis hijos, mi más chiquita, le pegó bronquitas, y uno de mis hijos tiene asma también, y pues todos estamos enfermos. Ahí nos, nos sentimos muy este, cansados siempre, y pues yo quisiera hacerles una petición de que quitaran esos troques que cruzan en la siete, y ser, yo estoy pegadita al freeway, y allí es una barba yo necesito porque se me han caído hasta.
I'd like to translate that. Her name is Belia. Is your name, señor?
Laguna.
Belia Laguna, she lives right near the freeway. She says that she has cancer, her children has asthma, she would like to close her of the Seventh Street entrance to the freeway, or Breed and Seventh Street.
The limitations.
And also get a tonnage limitation if they can't close it. But also, she's stating that her family is very sick due to the toxic emissions from the diesels.
Your name, please.
Mi nombre es Alfonso Barba, vivo en la 24, 64 East Seventh Street between Zorro and Breed. Tenemos un problema bastante fuerte ahí con la.
Try to talk in English.
We have a lot of pollution in there, a lot of sick, sick people. I have my wife with cancer. I have a grandson with asthma. We have noise, we have tremble in the house, broken windows and everything. So we need something to do something about the kids that run in there, that go to school, they can't sleep because the noise. We try to, oh, Mr. Pacheco, thank Mr. Pacheco for helping us. Thank you.
You want to speak next?
I think, I think we got the point, the point, so.
One of our neighbors here has luster lung with respect to cancer, and there's, my wife died some two, three years ago after living about 40 years in the, in the area. She died of cancer. The epidemic is, is quite large from our, as far as our neighborhood's concerned, and we feel it has to do with the diesels. Of course, of course, that's not the only thing that the diesels cause a problem. The, the problem is noise in the sense that we can't even speak to each other without a diesel truck when it's going by will drown out the, the, the voice. We have the problem of if we're sitting on television, we don't know what the stories are all about because the trucks sort of intervene. We have dust that accumulates in our cars if they're parked, if they're parked outside. We have dust that also.
Okay, I think you made your point. What is your name?
My name is Patricia Sanchez.
Okay, okay.
Margarita Sanchez, I'm at 2474 East Seventh Street, and me and the neighbors are all here, which you just heard, four homeowners of years, 18 to 40 years of home owning there on Seventh and Breed Street, where we thank Nick Pacheco for putting forth this mileage limit, tonnage limitation. It's extremely important to us. This here, my father's very humble, he lives on the corner. This shows no fire hydrant on the opposite corner, increasing numbers of fuel tankers that come in and turn there, and the, and his own corner, excuse me, his own corner has today the tonnage cage totally flattened out, the kids can't use it, and he lives only like five to 10 feet his building from there, and he's had broken windows and stuff. Now, if there's going to be an explosion, then I'm going to be over here mourning at the city council chambers, and I please would not like to do that. Please support us on our tonnage limitation. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, that, that closes the public hearing. Mr. Pacheco.
I would only say that the residents are very aware of the fact that this is the beginning of the process, and understand that we have some other meetings to come back to, to finally get the tonnage limitation, and I would urge everyone's support on the motion, so we can get this done for them. Thank you.
We have your 33A?
33A, yes.
Okay, prepare the roll on that. Oh, Mr. Fuer, did you want to be heard?
Just for five seconds, I, I want to say that our colleague, Mr. Pacheco, deserves a lot of credit for bringing in this issue. It is a very important local issue in this neighborhood, and a very important issue citywide, and Mr. Pacheco is helping us to highlight the problems associated with diesel trucks barreling through neighborhoods, spewing carcinogens. You know, diesel constitutes 71% of the health threat we have from toxics in our air. And Ms. Pacheco, I just wanted to say, I think it's terrific you brought that in. I know your constituents are very grateful, but all of us in the city really benefit from your highlighting this issue.
All right, Mr. Hernandez.
Mr. President, members of council, one, I want to recognize Ms. Sanchez and the work they're doing. This something should have happened 20 years ago. I think by highlighting it, we're dealing with sound walls, and Caltrans now has to deal with it, and Mr. Pacheco is doing more than highlighting, he's actually doing something about it by having us limit the tonnage, and I wanted to recognize that effort. When communities are standing up for the quality of life, we have to be supportive, but in this instance, it's been an abuse of the quality of life. And again, I want to commend my colleague for bringing it to our attention and doing something about it.
Ms. Goldberg.
Yes, I too want to join in commending Mr. Pacheco, but I also want to point a little warning notice, which is enforcement is really critical, because my area is also dotted with freeways. We have many areas where there have been these signs put up, and they are by the larger companies followed, but by the smaller companies largely ignored, even though they have big trucks in some of these smaller companies. And so what we need to do is to make sure that there's enforcement and hear from our traffic safety and LAPD about what, whether they have the resources to do that, because without enforcement, you'll get some compliance, but you're not going to get what you need. And I think these are important, important steps, but the enforcement is very difficult. And I, I know that you've got a good watch group out there that's going to let you know what's going on. That's going to be a big part of the help, too.
Charlie Thomas.
Mr. President, members of the council, I rise to compliment Mr. Pacheco for moving this piece forward in order to make for a better set of circumstances in CD 14. Mr. Fuer makes the point about diesel, while in fact it's related, it is obviously not the driving issue here. I'm supportive of 33 as it exists, and would call to the attention to those who are interested that on next Wednesday, we will be dealing with the issue of alternative fuels and the issue of diesel as it pertains to a better quality of life for residents at large.
Oh, come on, Nate. Mr. Holden.
I move the previous question and entire matter.
Okay. Boy, you're getting better, Nate. There's no one else wants to be heard, so the previous question has been imposed. So prepare the roll on, on item 33 as amended. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Okay, Jerry, item 26 is before us now.
Jerry Miller with the CLA's office. As you recall, one of the primary goals of the city in entering into the Staples Arena transaction.
Jerry, wait a minute, let me, Mr. Lewicki, why don't you come up here, because you have this model you want to show, and, go ahead, Jerry.
Okay. In any case, it presented the opportunity for the city to clear out significant blight in the area, to provide economic development, and the opportunity for a convention center hotel, which as you all know is something the city's been seeking for some time. The DDA required Staples to come back to the city with a master plan that provided the convention center hotel, that also prevented them from doing anything with that property other than surface parking until the master plan was submitted and approved. So today before you is Tim Lewicki. So today before you is Tim Lewicki, and they would like to present to you the master plan.
Mr. President, members of council, first, I want to thank a couple of people that have worked with us through this process that are here today. Richard Slossin of the Building Trades, David Crowe of Local Eleven, Michael Collins of the Convention and Visitors Bureau, Carol Schatz of the Central City Association, Bing Cherry of USC, Mike Pfeifer of South Park. Thank you for all your help in preparing and giving us input and direction on this particular project. If I may, first, I want to provide to the council a brief video that will give them a review of the private-public partnership that we have created with Staples Center and the success of that building, and in particular, to thank the council for their leadership and their vision on that project.
It's going to shape the destiny, and particularly the downtown destiny of your city for the next fifty years.
We will show the world that Los Angeles is the capital city of the 21st century.
What a great opportunity for us to build what will be the state-of-the-art indoor arena in the United States.
We're proud of certain things in Los Angeles, and this is going to be, we're right near the top in the future.
It's almost a, a dream that Ed and I find hard to believe.
We're all looking to open this in October of ninety-nine.
Today, we are introducing a new superstar to the city of Los Angeles, the Staples Center.
We did it in eighteen months. These arenas take twenty-four months to go build.
The construction went at a great nick place. I mean, everybody talked about it, and it just seemed to have come together miraculously
This is the best arena ever built. There is no place anywhere in the world that has a better arena than this one. This will be the new mecca for entertainment in this country as we know it.
Thanks for believing in, thanks for betting on Los Angeles. We won't let you down.
Again, our thanks to the council and the city staff for your leadership, and by the way, the Lakers will win it in five on Friday night, for those of you that were wondering.
Were you, were you wishing for a loss last night, Tim?
We need that fifth game. That's a good home gate for us there, John. We are here today to talk about a, the next phase for the master plan and the redevelopment of the district in and around the Convention Center in downtown Los Angeles. The theme that you will see throughout this Phase Two and Phase Three is a catalyst to extend and enhance the Central Business District, to create a content campus so that LA becomes a place where people come to produce live events for the internet, for cable, and for television, to create a pedestrian-oriented major gathering place for all of downtown Los Angeles and the surrounding neighborhoods, and most importantly, to allow the LA Convention Center to achieve its full potential. A convention hotel and a critical piece of the ability to bring the major groups and the major conventions to downtown Los Angeles, and to transform the LA Convention Center from a trade show facility to a true convention center. What you're now seeing is a flyby that was produced by UCLA and gives you a vision of what this campus and what this district will look like. The vision we have for, for the LA Sports and Entertainment District is a vision for a vibrant district, not a project unto itself, but rather an extension to the Central Business District and a further extension of the Convention Center to the Central Business District. It is an open, inviting part of the city. They say that no city ever becomes great by chance. We see around the country today many cities going through a major urban revitalization in their downtown core. Cleveland, Denver, Phoenix, Baltimore, and Detroit are just a few examples of cities that have utilized these sports and entertainment venues to revitalize their downtown community. We have a chance to do something special in downtown. We will do something special now in downtown Los Angeles. We would like to build on the hope and the power of LA's original vision. Reinforce downtown as the heart and the soul of the region. It is a conceptual vision that's a work in progress. We come here today to talk to you about a partnership and an alliance. We don't come with a presentation on the financial details. We've gone through that once before. We think there's a better way, and the way is to forge a partnership with you to make this hotel and this district a reality. Major new investments must now be linked together. We have the synergy that is occurring in downtown Los Angeles. Disney Hall, Expo Park, the new cathedral, and the renovation of Dodger Stadium. We can now reinforce the Figueroa Corridor as a link among major sports, entertainment, civic, cultural, and financial uses for all of Los Angeles. We will build on the success of Staples Center, and we will bring new life and energy and enormous exposure nationwide and internationally to Los Angeles. We've seen that already with the recently completed Grammys, the upcoming Latin Grammys to take place, the first ever at Staples Center, concerts such as Bruce Springsteen, and of course, this summer, LA will play host to the Democratic National Convention. We have delivered numerous jobs to the local residents within the poverty areas. We've increased business. We have donated over five million dollars back to charities in Los Angeles and created millions of dollars in new taxes for the city of Los Angeles. And most importantly, in conjunction with the unions, we are a pro-union building, a pro-union development. We must now replace the parking that you see, that surface parking, with a quality urban development, and we must maximize the economic benefits to the city of LA. We start with a Convention Center Hotel, twelve hundred rooms, forty stories tall, and with a secondary hotel created across the street from the Convention Center on Figueroa will give us a total of fifteen hundred new Convention Center rooms to bring in the major conventions and the events that we have been losing in the past. To create a site for the expansion of the LA Convention Center by creating a possibility and a probability of a quarter of a million square feet of additional LA Convention Center space, to create a retail and entertainment environment that becomes an asset and a resource for the overnight stays in downtown Los Angeles, and clearly, the linchpin being the Convention Center Hotel that will be a four-star quality hotel with up to a hundred thousand square feet of ballroom and meeting space, with a front door that faces the Central Business District and extends the Central Business District. A quarter of a million square feet for the LA Convention Center that will allow us to compete with the expansion going on in our surrounding communities of San Diego, Anaheim, San Francisco, and Denver. LA Live, which you now see highlighted on the screen, is our live content camp.